Welcome to the
We're starting.
September nineteenth, Wednesday, September nineteenth Transportation Commission study session.
All right, well, today we are gonna give you an update on our 2018 capital improvement projects and talk about our 2019 projects, give you an overview of what we have coming up. So I've got some slides that I'll walk through. I think we're gonna start with the status of our existing projects that are underway in design or construction. So as you know, we're been working on plans to put in a center turn lane there on 23rd Street that we talked about earlier this year with the Transportation Commission from Mass to Louisiana. That also includes overlying 23rd Street from Iowa to Louisiana. So we just let that project and awarded it.
There's a slide.
Oh, okay.
That's just a number.
Oh, that's the overview. Sorry. So the City Commission approved the... So you can see the slides?
No, I can't, but I'll put them later.
Okay. All right, so our 23rd Street project, it bid and we awarded the project last night at the Commission meeting. So we're gonna begin here likely in the next month to mill and overlay 23rd Street from Ozdale to Louisiana. And we're also gonna begin redoing the water line from Louisiana to Lennard. That project will go through the winter into the spring and then we will come back and overlay the street there between Louisiana and Barker. We're also widening the street to put in this center turn lane and we're putting, filling the gap sidewalk on the north side of the street and redoing the sidewalk on the south side of the street. So that project will start here this fall and go into the spring of next year.
Isn't it be down to like one lane in each direction on that for reconstruction?
Well, when we're doing the mill and overlay, it'll be phased so that as they mill the road, it'll be one lane in that direction and then they'll open it back up to traffic, do any patching that they need to do so it could, it could have some lane restrictions. And then when they overlay it too, it'll be one lane. So it's kind of a moving traffic control operation, but when they do the water line, the east abound outside lane will be closed because the water line's, majority of it's going underneath the street and there'll be some lane closures and we're widening the street to the south. So there will be some traffic impacts for, while they're doing the, doing the work, so. But the mill and overlay project should be complete here this fall from, and so it won't be a long duration of traffic impacts. But we're also going back and upgrading the sidewalk ramps in the corridor to meet ADA requirements. We're realigning the ramps at 23rd and Louisiana. And I think there's some, there was a few other intersections that were redoing, redoing that, so. Okay. You wanna talk about our Mass Street update?
Mass Street, you guys have probably seen that the mill and overlay from 11th to 14th, that's already been completed. Sorry. We actually received bids on this about a month ago for all the striping and it was over the budget. So we kinda made a on-the-fly adjustment and had the mill and overlay project do the centerline striping to get that established. We re-scoped some of the project and just rebid it. And bids were open yesterday and it's within budget. So that should go to City Commission on October 2nd for award. So they have 20 working days. There's some, also some, basically it's striping and pavement markings and then some ramps through there. I think there's eight or nine ADA ramps. So it's a fairly small project, but they have 20 working days from when we issued the notice to proceed. So they should be done by early November with that, that project.
What was changed in the project?
It was just, it was really just a material change. So we changed the, so one thing was the, the type of pavement markings we were using. If you do them after the pavement's in, there's a lot more work to it. You have to grind out and then put it in versus doing it while they're doing the overlay. So it was a lot cheaper to do that piece with the mill and overlay project because his bid prices were less than a third of ours for that centerline striping, for the material we used. So we pulled that out of the scope, had, had that project done there for significantly less money. And then for all the bike lane stuff, we're switching to MMA material, which is a material we haven't used. They've used it a little at KDU, but it's a lot cheaper. Figured this was a good place to kinda try it out and see how it lasts. So we switched to that, that spec for the kinda white lines that define the bike lane buffer and the green. So when the prices came in, half of, I mean, some of that was scope being removed, but it was significantly cheaper that way.
I mean, for Joe, we've talked about using green paint at various locations and now we have a price for it. Can you give us some kind of guideline for, I know this, I don't know if this would be considered a medium-sized project or a what, unit cost?
We follow the TAP. So this new material called MMA, it's a lot cheaper. It's more like a paint. We've been using it in downtown Kansas City. What I wanna caution is, we don't wanna just go throw it down everywhere until we see how it performs. So it is, it is cheaper. There's some other options. You can do preform green. It's a lot more expensive. Preform we have experience with and it's durable. From what I'm hearing from the product reps and from some contractors that installed it, if preform's a 10 in durability, this is an eight or nine. And if it's half the price, well, that's pretty good. But I think we need to see how it performs before we, just a word of caution to that. So we thought this is kind of a good area. We can put it down and we can really see how, how it does perform. Because I think our guys who do that are, they're a little hesitant, a new material. We also don't have the equipment needed to install. You can do blocks of it, like the green, just by masking it off and painting. But if you're doing like lines, you need equipment. And so we have to buy that at some point if this was a material that we wanted to maintain, but.
Well, I'm not real clear, the, what did you say, the MM?
MMA.
MMA, that's a paint spec?
It's, it's a two-part paint type.
Okay.
A proxy glue then.
It's methyl methacrylate or something. It's a newer product, but it's.
Preform, which is something you actually apply?
Yeah, it's like, it's a, it's already cut out shape and then you, you burn it in and.
But it's a lot.
Yeah, it's quite, it's quite a bit more for that versus, it depends what quantity you're doing because like you're buying a certain, once you mix the MMA, if you only use a little bit of it, you've lost the whole. So if you're doing a larger amount, it works out. If you're doing a tiny bit, it's harder because once you mix it, you've only got a little bit of time to get it down. So it's kinda depends how much you're doing too.
It sounds like resin.
How it works out.
You mix, make the resin. You mix both chemicals.
Yeah, and you're doing a big, you know, container of it.
So what did this come in at?
The green area was $9 a square foot.
And then the white, what was the white six?
The white, this, $3 a linear foot.
Which I think was like six to eight for the, for the powder cold plastic originally, so.
So if we did like an intersection, a crosswalk, anywhere, it would be about, how wide is a crosswalk?
That one is?
That's the old one.
Crosswalk would be about, what, five?
Six feet, six feet wide typically, unless you're doing a shared use path, then it's, it's gonna be wider. Can't remember.
Five, three?
Well, our spacing is, I think it's two foot and then a four-foot gap and then two foot. Is that our?
So these are stripes?
That's the one from yesterday.
Well, crosswalks would be blocks.
There's much of them.
Who's that ladder?
Well, I'm just trying to get an idea.
It's the zebra.
If we said, hey, let's put green stripes on a crosswalk on 31st Street or Castle. Would that be, at $9 a square foot?
It just depends on the quantity, but it'd probably be in that ballpark.
Okay, the quantity, I'm trying to get an estimate of the quantity.
Oh, for a crosswalk?
How many intersections are we doing across?
Well, I think you're talking crosswalk or crosswalk. It depends on your width of your road, how many blocks you're gonna have. Let's talk, I'll look at it. I think he's pulling up the detail. We'll give you a number in a few minutes.
Okay.
Let's do a couple of these and we'll get a number.
A hundred bucks.
That's typically just for bicycle, bike lanes?
Yeah, yeah, you use it for, for shared, shared use path, it can be appropriate potentially.
Maybe a black box, a signal.
Yeah. The other thing is too, costs that aren't in that square foot cost, you have your mobilization costs. So you have, if you have to remove any other striping, there's obliteration costs of your existing striping. So there, there is other things that kinda play into that, but that's a good, like, that would probably be a pretty consistent price. I think our price from the contractors is pretty consistent too. But yeah, well, how, what is it, is it a two-four?
What are you thinking about?
Oh, I'm just thinking a few times we've said, hey, what if we did an intersection with green paint? And we haven't had an idea of what it's gonna cost. And the one that I'm thinking of, we exchanged, you know, Albridge and Castle, where we had some bike issues.
Oh, yeah.
Remember, we talked, we had some real close calls there. Somebody suggested maybe considering, you know, a green crosswalk. And we kinda said, well, that's what it costs.
I haven't seen anything like that. The painted bike lanes I've seen, but not crosswalks themselves.
So you'll, what they, where they do it sometimes is you might have your, if you have like a bike lane, you just go through an intersection where I've seen pictures and stuff and you have, you have your own block still because that's more your white for pedestrians. Next to it, you may have like the green that matches up with the white and that's for your, your bikes. So typically you'll see it in places where it's separated from the pedestrian. It's meant to be more of a bike coloring.
That makes more sense. As a way to present like the path for bikes.
Yeah.
Yeah, to draw attention that, hey, there might be bikes coming through here.
Well, this particular intersection, there's more on the Castle, gets a lot of bike traffic from the trails, from the shared use paths, starting at the theater going clear out to Cleveland.
Twenty, so thirty-five, eleven. So there'd be about 12 blocks on most like collector-level street, 12 times.
I'll be curious how effective that would be.
So 12 times 20, this is not working.
I just think if you're approaching, if there's a raised crosswalk, that'd be more effective.
And we have a lot, we have a lot of crossings.
Probably a couple thousand, two. Two thousand-ish. Depends on the width of the street, it depends on the width of the path because you've gotta match, so two thousand-ish. The other thing we have to keep in mind is our pavement marking budget for maintenance is very, very small. And we're adding streets and we're adding marking and we have not increased that amount $66,000 a year for a very long time. Every year we ask for more money and it's not approved. So if we, my concern with adding more and more striping is it's gonna be maintained worse and worse. And because there's only so much money to go around. And so, and I don't think we maintain it right now to really probably an acceptable level to some people. So we have to keep that in mind that there's the upfront cost, but then there's also the, in a few years, you're gonna have to redo that. And if you now put it everywhere, that becomes every year you're doing so many of them and that's not currently something there's money available for. So we've just gotta be cautious of that, that if that becomes something we're interested in doing, that we really push for that increased budget also, so.
Is that, the funding that's set aside for Ped Bike, could that be used for that sort of expense? Or is that?
I would think you could use it for like the upfront expense, but the maintenance of it? I'm not sure how that would be received. Do you think?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question.
I mean, if you were gonna say, we're gonna go do it this year, every, you know, as an initial rollout, but yeah.
It kinda reminds me of the discussions like with Parks and Ranks about, you know, the upfront cost of a new trail is one thing and then the maintenance kinda gets put over on them to like deal with the trail 10 years from now and it's starting to fall apart. And, or even just plowing it, like that stuff all comes, hits, hits their budget apparently, so. It's a twofold thing, just getting it in and then maintaining it.
Yeah, I don't wanna get the cart before the horse. I was just kinda curious about the cost and, you know, if we thought maybe it would be helpful in some situations in a crosswalk with somewhere else.
We've also.
We don't know that yet. I don't think we've had a discussion.
I think, I think anytime there's a high priority crossing, like the Safe Route crossings, especially now the ones that have the rectangle, rectangular rapid flashing beacons, like, it'd be really important to maintain those strengths.
Yeah, we put like, the school crossings are one of the first priorities.
Yeah.
Every year for our, our budget with the pavement marking. The other thing I was gonna say is when we went to the APWA conference, talked to a couple of different people who had some different materials. Also, the company that sells the MMA is willing to come out and do like an intersection in the preform so we can kinda compare the wear over the next couple of years. There's another company that Chuck talked to that has a different material that said they would be willing to do the same. And so we've talked briefly, we haven't talked about it, you know, I think it's something we'll, as things slow down a little bit with everything going on, we'll talk about. Potentially maybe finding a couple of other locations where we can just do something to, we can watch how it wears with these different material types and see which one's really the best value. So we were thinking in something maybe on Sixth Street, you know, where the shared use path is or something like that, some crossings. So I don't know, we, we may come back to you guys with the discussion about something like that if I can, if I reach out to these companies and find out what they are willing to do. But some of them are willing to kinda come in and do one for you, so.
All right, move on.
Next.
Oh, this is me. I'll, I'll go first, but you.
Oh, well, the, as far as the first one, we are working in design on 2018. There are two projects. One is sidewalk gaps and ADA ramps, the other is some CDVG work. So those are spread out around town, several different places, some on.
11th?
Oh, I've got a map.
11th, New York.
They're all over. You know them by heart.
Well, I know 11th Street, New York Elementary's, Safe Route, which I think most of that's along New York, right? 16th and Haskell, RFB, older sidewalk gaps.
Couple other sidewalk gaps, but the bottom line is they're about halfway through design and should be able to let a project this winter with construction probably next spring. We need to spend our CDVG money apparently by June 1st, so. It's getting done. That's the first two, right?
Yeah, and then the bicycle boulevards. I am negotiating right now, well, waiting on scope and fee, negotiate a contract with a consultant. So we will hopefully be bringing that to the October 16th City Commission meeting is the goal. So once I know that we have something that will work out, I will hopefully, maybe, I don't know, I may have it by the October 1st meeting. To give you guys an update on who that is, I wanna make sure we can come to terms on scope and fee before we.
Was the process used, was it RFQ?
Yes.
And did you get a lot of applications?
No. We had two. They were, I will say, they were big national firms who know what they're doing. So I'm not concerned that we only got two because I think we got two good, good options, so.
That's good.
Yeah, so, and, and so I'm working with them now. So hopefully I can let you guys know maybe at the October 1st meeting. We'll see if we, if I have everything from them by then.
So there, that community meeting about the 21st Street Bike Boulevard, has there been anything since then for the community engagement?
No, what, so the, a big piece of this contract will be that. So we have a, we have a really, again, I think you guys recognize this will likely be a more expensive design project than typical for, like, given the construction cost because we have a large part of the front end of being the engagement, the community meetings and those type of things. So that was one thing that we made sure we kinda prioritized in the RFQ is to tell us what experience you had with that. And so both of the firms who presented have plenty of experience going into communities who this is new to and helping sell that. So we definitely want them to help us message, message that because they're probably way better at it than any of us here. So the, once we get the contract awarded, we'll get them out here probably to look at all the places and then we'll start talking about strategy for when we wanna have those meetings. But we will be having neighborhood meetings once, once they're on board, so.
I would kinda be curious, like, given the importance of getting this right and the public engagement piece, we had on the list like 21st Street, Lawrence Avenue, 13th Street. Like, I'd like to know their advice on, like, given it's the first one in Lawrence, like, is it smarter just to focus on just one?
Well, there's, so there's, we were, when we went to City Commission, they basically said they weren't interested in Lawrence Avenue. So I.
We've kinda had that.
Yeah, we.
Reaction to it.
So I think we already have, I only scoped it for the two. There are two separate pots of money that each have two different bond resolutions. One is for 13th Street, one is for 21st Street. I did tell them though, that when I was talking to the firm the other day was, one of the first things I wanna know is where, where do they think we are in budget once they come out and look at it? And do we think, I mean, do we next year need to put more money into it? Out of next year's to say, hey, we wanna augment this because they think we really need this? Or are we about where we need to be with the budget? So I told them that's one of the first things I want to know from them is with their, their first impression, where are we? But I think the intent is still to do the two because it is a traffic calming that is funding 13th Street and the bike ped money. But I think we'd have some flexibility to, if we decided to, especially depending on the TA grant stuff, if we get what we need for matching funds next year, we potentially could have some flexibility to give some of next year's funds if we needed to into it. But I don't know if that'll be necessary, it may or may not be. I know that they seem very interested in low-cost, effective solutions. So it's not overbuild it and, so we'll see.
I might tend to get into the weeds too far, so cutting off on this, but kinda interested, I would think the RFQ would have had, tell us about similar communities that you've worked into Lawrence and how you worked with those neighborhood groups and what communities would they have cited in their response?
I don't remember specifically. We asked for similar projects. Yeah, we, so in the, we asked for similar projects. We asked for how they would approach the project. So they lay out like, we foresee this many public meetings and then we see this in this phase. Here's the deliverable we see out of this phase, here's the next, you know. So they lay all that out. They tell us their backgrounds and what projects each person's worked on. But I don't remember specifically what communities were, were referenced, but we do ask for similar projects and we ask for references.
I'll answer that question because I, without naming names or, you know, going back over the last two or three years, I've seen some like big city consultants meet with neighborhood groups and there was not a connection. It was a really obvious disconnect between, you know, telling people what they ought to be doing and listening. And I just think this is one of those situations where, you know, I'd be really curious about the other communities and, you know, where they work. But you guys are gonna pick.
Well, and, and I will tell you that, that I think the people that are really, these companies that are really passionate about this bike ped stuff.
Yeah.
They're probably different than you see in like an architecture firm out of New York coming in and trying to talk, you know what I mean? I think that they are in some of the smaller communities and have done work there. I don't, like I said, I don't remember their exact locations they had done work, but.
We also asked both of them to partner with a local firm that knows the community and so we're gonna have some local engineering staff also partner with the larger firm that's, has some experience, so for the public involvement in, in the design.
We've got Wichita, Dave Perez, Missouri, Fort Collins.
I think a lot depends on how you, as, how you are.
Yes, Fort Collins is one.
Honestly, I think.
Ferguson, Missouri.
You're gonna know more than they know, so how you situate it for them and set up what the expectations are, something like that would matter a lot, you know. The other nice thing we can bring in an outside group is if things do go wrong, staff can provide more of a, I mean, almost kind of cross, like you're kinda stewarding the public's trust because people acknowledge like this group doesn't know what they're doing. I, I don't think there's gonna be this problem, but.
Yeah.
I think there's some advantage to having that come from an outsider than, it gives staff more flexibility to still come across as competent and caring.
Tools done work in Lawrence before, Milwaukee, Baltimore.
Well, Fort Collins sounds good.
Yeah, the one homeless, Fort Collins, Wichita, I mean, so. But yeah, the local firm was a big, big thing for us because we do wanna start building that knowledge here, so. You guys should be hearing about that soon.
Are you getting any feedback on the head projects there, like the rectangular rapid flashing beacons? Since that's kinda near any?
We haven't gotten, I haven't received any feedback. We were gonna put together a brief report to update everyone on. That project's kinda getting near in completion. I think they have most, if not all of them in, but I haven't had any.
Seen some kids that probably run, kinda taking turns, like, you know, one wants to do it and then the other one wants to wait till it stops and they wanna push it.
So they're just pushing it constantly?
Just kinda queuing up, you know? Thought that was kind of interesting, their response. I mean, I saw this kid waiting, like, it's waiting for you and it's like he wanted it to stop before he would push it himself.
Ninth Street, Pennsylvania, New Hampshire, that's obviously under construction now of over $2 million bucks. We're closed from New Hampshire to Connecticut right now. The only access really is to the Marriott Garage off New Hampshire. Everywhere else is to be closed off. There's a change order to deal with the, some extra storm sewer that we found. There's an old limestone block storm sewer that we dug up and decided to go ahead and replace that while we got the street ripped up.
I think we need a museum here, this whole stuff.
We got all kinds of stuff coming out of Ninth Street. And then we, we did take the Lawrence Preservation Alliance out to the brick pile and they had some concerns of how we're handling the historic materials. So we'll send the update to the city manager on, on that discussion as well here shortly, so. So Ninth Street's going. Contractor, just off the cuff, he's supposed to be done by December. We'll see if that happens based on the progress he's made so far, so it may spill into next spring.
All right, so we have, we wrapped up our plans and planning process for the 19th Street reconstruction from Naismith to Iowa. And that includes the bicycle pedestrian tunnels that we're doing underneath 19th and Iowa. So we got those plans wrapped up and we're getting those out to bid in October and then anticipate starting the project in early 2019, allowing the contractor to do some work outside the roadway, start working on utilities. Then beginning, beginning spring break, we would, beginning reconstructing 19th from Iowa to Ozdale and work on the east half of the tunnel that goes underneath Iowa. And then Phase Two would be to do 19th Street from Ozdale to Naismith and do the west half of the Iowa tunnel. So when we have the, we're going on underneath Iowa, we'll have one lane of traffic in each direction throughout the project while they do the tunnel, the tunnel portion. And then we're gonna phase the 19th Street reconstruction into, into two segments. So we should have it all done by the time school starts in fall of 2019. That's the completion date.
Just a personal question, will I be able to turn from Naismith on 19th?
You will in the first phase when we're working from Iowa to Ozdale, but when we're in the second phase between Naismith and Ozdale, you will not be, the street will be closed through traffic. So you could still use Ozdale to get to campus to go through the intersection there or take a left. Okay, well, you, yeah, you would need to use 23rd Street would probably be the detour route for you if you were going east down 19th, so.
There's a project on 23rd.
Yeah, there's a project on 23rd.
There is and.
So should I just take a leave of absence from my office?
21st Street?
Oh, wait, but we might be working out.
Well, if, you know, as we're trying to, we're. Well, if, you know, as we're trying to, we should have the majority of Twenty Third Street done by early spring. And so I think phasing wise, it's, that's what's important that we get this milling overlay and the water line work done over the winter so we can wrap that up. So have Twenty Third Street open ideally to all lanes of traffic and then, and then start this project, so.
Huh? You don't sound convinced.
Oh, I may just go all the way down to the bypass and then get off at Haskell.
Yeah, so it, it'll be inconvenient, but it'll be a great project when it's done and it's the final, final piece there on Nineteenth Street of multi-year projects, so.
It is progress. Yeah, Lawrence's office is the independent thing.
Yes.
This is just, uh, all the two thousand nineteen CIP that we thought had some significance to this group. Kind of go through them here, uh, one by one. So the sidewalk bike pen stuff, um, that, we, we talked about some projects to, when we did the application. We ended up getting more funding than we had applied for, they had some additional funding this year, it's three hundred and three thousand approximately. Um, so I'm going to be probably coming back in November with the final list to say, hey, these are the ones we think we should do, um, with that, that money. And then after that, we'll hire a consultant, um. This one, we actually included the design costs as part of the reimbursable, so of that three hundred and three, some of that will be the design costs. And then also the, uh, the TA, well, and actually too, I should say the next year's. Um, I was jumped down to the CDBG. The, uh, next year's sidewalk bike pen money also in November, we'll want to start having some discussions about what we want to do next year with those funds. We're going to have to kind of look at the TA grant applications a lot, if we get one or even two of those. A lot of the funds are probably going to be used for design of those projects. So we'll have to have the discussion with whether we want to design those anyway, whether we get the grant or not with the money to potentially have them queued up. Um, or whether we want to go a different route if we don't get the TA, so that'll be a discussion we'll have, we'll come with a recommendation, look at everything and see. Um, hopefully in November is, is the plan with that. Any questions on that one?
Uh, Clinton Parkway to Twenty Second on Castle, uh, there's about a million bucks in the CIP. Uh, we did our own in-house kind of more detailed estimate and it's likely going to cost more than two million to complete that. It's a very wide pavement plus the, uh, to add sidewalk to both sides of Castle and make a path width on the west side. Uh, you're going to have to cut into that hill quite a bit, so there's probably some retaining wall and, uh, some other expenses that are going to need done as part of that. So I think Dave's on the hunt for, under every rock to, to see what type of funds might make up the other part of that funding.
Yeah, I would say this, um, this project, so we did, um, we've done a lot of castle reconstruction and we did the section between Bob Billings and Twenty Second Street, which has almost been ten years ago. It was one of the first, uh, projects under the old infrastructure sales tax, um, program. Um, we didn't have enough funds at the time to get all the way down to Clinton Parkway, so we've always kind of wanted to go back and fix this se- segment. Um, um, the southbound left turn lane needs to be lengthened, the pavement's in bad condition, you know? Um, John mentioned the, the gap in the, um, shared use path that we have there that we want, want to fix. And so we had, uh, earmarked it at the end of the, um, last sales tax plan and we had a million dollars in there, but we need to, if we're going to do the full, full deal with having, um, grading on the east side to get a sidewalk in there. It's likely going to be, um, more than that, and so we looking at different options and, um, working potentially to use our KDOT, uh, annual allocation from their federal fund exchange to, to increase the, the budget and, and get all this done. Um, so we're looking at, in the very, very preliminary planning stages, looking at cost estimates and, and design details, but, um. Um, I think it's, uh, important that we redo the pavement and then look at getting the bike pen connections there, so. That is in the works for next year and John, this one's yours.
All right, and Sixth and Tennessee on Sixth Street, we've got some KDOT funds, uh, about two hundred and fifty thousand bucks match from them. Uh, to add a right turn lane on Sixth Street to Tennessee, so as part of that project. Uh, we'll end up widening Sixth Street about seven feet, so not, we can narrow the lanes on the main line and, uh, there's a little bit of a, I'd say ineffective parking area, uh, today. So that we're able to take advantage of some of that, so most of the expense of this project is probably milling and overlaying the existing, so we can redo the taper of all the stripes. Uh, and then, uh, another piece of this will be, uh, adding a bulb out at Tennessee to reduce that pedestrian crossing. And one option, because we're losing some green, uh, edge, you know, on Sixth Street, it's a historic district, so we're looking at, there's a little piece of Ohio Street that's not brick. At the, brick ends quite a bit south of the Sixth Street intersection, so we need to redo some portion of Ohio to fix some drainage issues. So the little gap there, uh, that's not brick, we thought as, as part of this project, we could go ahead and replace, you know, with brick. Um, using other parts of our brick pile. Not Ninth Street because that's east Lawrence, so we want to keep those bricks in east Lawrence and this is old west Lawrence, but. That's about the, the rundown, it'll probably be let next summer, so expect construction probably in the late summer, early fall.
And we're looking to, oh, oh, sorry, I was just looking, was going to have, we're looking to bring the project a little more detail to the Transportation Commission in, in October. So we can show some images and give you better understanding where we're at, we just started, uh, design plans.
I was wondering where the bulb out would be. Well, I talked about Seventh Street and Eighth Street, didn't I?
Yeah, this is six, so this is only.
This is just six?
Our project is on six. This is, it's a KDOT, what, what's this?
Uh, geometric improvement.
So it would be holdouts for people crossing eastwards.
Yeah, on the south side of Sixth and Tennessee, mm-hmm, shorten the crossing, redo the storm sewer.
On both sides of Tennessee?
Just the west side.
Where, where the parking is, basically. Push people out.
So right turn lane, but you'd have to go around the bulb out.
Right.
Should slow, slow down then.
Mm-hmm, not seem really good.
Yeah.
That's a tough, I mean, that's, that, there really needs to be a right turn lane right there, so many cars return, not with council.
It seems like at least fifty percent of the cars though in that lane turn.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's about, what, thirty thousand vehicles a day, give or take on Sixth Street, so that's.
Yeah, but that's the main way to go through town, if you want to go through downtown.
Yep, so we'll be back on that one, more to come.
Yeah, I think that's the main item on the October, um, meeting agenda.
Queens Road, so, um, October the, I want to say second, um, two later. Um, the city, um, commission on the agenda is going to have the public hearing for the benefit district for, um, improving the Queens Road project, which has, um, been on, on hold. Um, so pending that approval, uh, we proceed with finishing the design plans. We've, uh, started the design plans several years ago, two or three years ago, and it's kind of been on hold. We're about ninety percent, um, complete with the plans, but essentially you have, the design will include one northbound lane, one southbound lane, a center, a center median. Um, there's a, a side street or two where we're going to have a center turn lane. It includes a roundabout at Overland Drive, which will be similar to the roundabout that was just constructed at Queens and Walker Russo Drive. Um, you'll have a shared use path on the west side of Queens Road and bike lanes on Queens Road. Um, and there will be a traffic signal at the intersection of Sixth and Queens Road. Um, so that project, um, we're looking to wrap up the design here this fall, um, and, and get going, uh, hopefully by next summer. Any questions on that?
Well, I just commented, I don't get out to that part of town very often, but a couple of weeks ago, a weekend, we drove out there and just kind of drove around the development. And I was really impressed with all the bike lanes and the bike, I guess you'd say the bike facilities in all that residential area. It seems pretty extensive and it seems like we talk a lot about, you know, the old part of town, you know, and those are big challenges, but the new developments, I think. From what I can tell, I don't get out there a lot, you live out in those areas, seems to be, are you guys happy with how that's all going?
Um, yeah, I mean, as, as we, um, redo these street projects and, um, we're starting to connect the dots in a way that we've done pieces and portions and now we're kind of connecting things in between. So it's, all takes time, but yeah, they, uh, just kind of extended Walker Russo, which turns into Rock Chalk Drive west of Queens Road. And that was the links development, uh, funded and did the plans and improvements for that, and they included a shared use path and bike lanes on that. And so I think that turned out to be a great, great project and it ties in well and, uh, like the alignment of the street, kind of has a curvilinear alignment to slow people down, so. Um, yeah, I think it turned out really well and, and with the roundabout there as well, so.
Would the demographics for that area include a lot of people going to Free State? A lot of kids potentially?
It's in the area, it's close, it's close by, so if you're, you know, is that, if we've developed there further to the west and the north and, um, there's potential for.
Right on the edge of the.
For driving.
Mm-hmm.
You go further north, let's hit the city.
Yeah, Rock Chalk Park, Rock Chalk Park is in the Imperial Compton School District and to the north, so.
Which is about ten miles to the east.
Yeah.
They can see Free State, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, well, I think most folks are familiar with our East Nineteenth Street discussion that we've had there, Harper to O'Connell Hall. Um, originally when we had, we've had it in the budget for a number of years, um, that had always included a count, a share from Douglas County to improve a section or fund a portion of the project is there immediately adjacent to Nineteenth Street. Um, and then they got through their budget cycle this year and decided that that wasn't a priority for funding for them. And so, um, the, um, we've gone through the, the process to, um, select a consultant or negotiate the scope and fee. And, um, waiting on, um, um, the, I guess the main thing we're waiting on is to be able to issue debt for our portion of the project, which is, um, um, funded. Um, general obligation debt and we need to make Nineteenth Street a main traffic way east of Harper to be able to issue the debt. So that's a process that we have that we need to do by ordinance, so we're actually looking, um, now just to, uh, have a charter ordinance that say, that says. You know, everything within the city limits can be a main traffic way and we can issue debt for, to be able to issue debt on any project instead of doing pieces and parts. Because we did that here this last year with traffic calming and so you're designating certain segments versus just having the ability to do it comprehensively. So we're looking at, uh, with our legal staff to have that, um, charter ordinance, I think in October and then proceed with, um, getting the design contract through, uh, the city commission. But I would say with, with the, um, uh, county funding portion, we're, we're kind of going to take a phased approach to design all the project here in the next year. Um, reconstruct the water line in twenty nineteen because it is in desperate need of replacement, we continue to have breaks. Um, so we, we do want to have a good idea where the water line should go, so it's not under the pavement or under a, a bike facility. So we're going to try to do the design here and, um, soon and, and like I said, construct a water line in nineteen and then pending funding, uh, complete the road, street project in twenty twenty-one. And so that is, uh, and we'll look at all the things we talked about before, I think with our, uh, design consultant, we, um, are talking to them about either five or six different street sec- sections. They'll look at, um, separated bike facilities, shared bike facilities, shared use path, on-street bike lanes, the widths, presented, uh, a bunch of different options in the pros and cons to talk about those. So we would, um, will have further discussions on that here, probably early in twenty nineteen on that project.
That will come back to the Transportation Commission, which.
It will, yep.
Is that twenty, or, yeah, twenty twenty-one, would that then be fully funded by the city with that? No expectation the county will change their mind?
Um, I think, um, I can't speak for the city manager's office or what our intentions are going to be, but I think we still intend them to fund a portion. They had, they had set aside funds for a number of years and just based off their budget decided that wasn't a priority for next year. So, um, it's up in the air to be decided, I think, um, but we've partnered with them on projects before and I think it's just, we need to find out what the appropriate timing is and, and, and I think also going through some of the design options will help maybe. Give us a better idea on the total cost of the project too, so we can look at best way to fund it, so. That's, that's the plan, uh, that I can give you today, that I think we're shooting for twenty twenty-one, but. Um, and then this might be our last slide, but we're, we have in the CIP a hundred thousand dollars to, um, study and maybe do some preliminary design work for, uh, the preferred alignment of the Lawrence Loop. Uh, for this downtown segment, which would be, um, between, um, Eleventh and Haskell down here to, uh, um, Bircham Park. So when we did our last study, uh, alignment study with the NPO, we looked at all these different alignments, what are the preferred alignments? I think we kind of came up with, well, this is the best alignment of the community's preferred alignment, but we recognized with that study, there's some obstacles, particularly the railroad and how we cross the railroad or potentially align the path alongside the railroad and the space limitation. So, um, at the end of that study, um, Railroad said, well, you need to present us, uh, some sort of design option for us to consider allowing this path to be in the railroad right of way. So, um, so the idea would be to start doing more work, to continue to make progress to say, hey, this is where the path needs to go, here's some, uh, here's a design option and, and then, um, proceed to look for funding to, to get it done, so. Um, and as you know, we also put this, um, study in, in, um, uh, our TA application is one of the three that we just submitted. We talked about having, um, further design of, of this, so if we, um, were successful in receiving those grant funds and we could use this money to supplement that or for something else. So, um, either way, we're moving forward as everyone wants to do with continuing to look, look at, uh, completing segments of the loop, so. That will be coming up next year as well.
Yep.
And I believe that is it, so let us know if you have any questions. We also have three point two million dollars in the budget for, um, contract maintenance, pavement maintenance, which we're looking at putting together a program here this fall and winter that Steve Lashley does, um, in our office. And looking at, um, preservation techniques and tactics for primarily residential streets to do milling overlay, micro-surfacing, curb and gutter replacement, um, et cetera. So that's, um, another big project that we're, that we're working on, but, um, no specifics on the streets yet.
Actually hoping to ask about, a little bit about that, when we, when we, um, reviewed the street maintenance plan, I think it was sometime last year, I think we've done that a couple of times now. Is the, like, we're out driving around seeing things, are all those projects in that street maintenance plan or did things happen more opportunistically? Like, um, on Clinton Parkway, the curb had been, um, replaced and then on Peterson, it was the same.
Mm-hmm.
And I just didn't remember, like, was that all on that plan or?
They were, yeah, that, that was in the plan.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And the intersection that got reconfigured a little bit, that Inverness and Clinton Parkway, was that on the plan or is that just part of the replacing the curb?
Um, well, the intersection replacement in the pavement was part of the plan. Um, but when we got, got into looking at the details of the plan, we looked at the curb ramp on the southwest corner, um, that didn't really meet ADA, so we went back and. um, that didn't really meet ADA, so we went back and, and did some more, I guess, ad hoc design this spring to reconfig, to redo that and added that to the project. And then when we were looking at traffic control, shifting it over, we took out some of the median, the skinny median that we had, and then made, um, decided to, instead of going back and putting the, the really skinny median, that's tough to maintain, um, that we would, um, just keep it out, and then, and then, uh, shift the left turns over so they have better, um, sight distance, the opposing left turns, so they're shifted over, um, uh, the opposing left turns on Clinton Parkway, if that makes sense.
And move the driveway, too, with the, that...
Yeah, and we, yeah, we also worked with the vet, veterinarian there on the northeast corner to move the driveway further from the intersection. They had kind of some future plans to, uh, potentially do something in the future with that side, and says, well, this is a good time, instead of rebuilding your driveway approach, get it further from the intersection for good access management, and so worked with them on that, so... So that was a, um, probably a more substantial maintenance project when you're getting into curb and gutter and some full depth of replacement of the intersection, but there, most of it, most of the rest of the project was just mill and overlay, but that intersection was a little more complicated than we originally intended.
So when, when we're looking at those, um, I'm assuming that Steve's gonna have one, another one coming up. Like, how would we know, like, here, this one's gonna also involve changes to the intersection design? Is that, does he have a way to identify that on the map? Like, this is the intersection that is gonna kind of maybe be, you know, change? I mean, that one in particular, just stood out for me, that I didn't recall that we had actually heard anything about it, and just seemed like it was quite a bit different than it had been, and didn't know if that was just, we weren't paying attention, or if it happened after, after that was all.
Yeah, we didn't think about it, to be honest with you, when we were discussing it last fall, the program. So, that, that's a kind of, yeah, that's a, in a way, unique situation, because most of its projects are just surface preservation. And that street had, um, some white topping, it was concrete on asphalt, which is something they did a while ago, and it never really worked well, so we took some of that out, and, uh, I think there were some drainage things, concerns we hadn't made, some changes, and, and yeah, so that was a little more complicated, but obviously, we'd prefer to, if we know we're gonna make significant changes, to let you know or discuss it before we get the plans done, so, um, we need to certainly be cognizant of that, and, and also looking at including sidewalk ramps in, in the discussion and budgeting them for those projects, because we, um, are trying to upgrade those when they're adjacent to our maintenance projects. So, it is, it's complicated, and there's a lot of factors that we need to think about and discussion of improvements to have, so those are things that, with our interdepartmental multimodal staff team, try to, um, get together and say, well, what's the plan for water lines next year? So you're not doing a water line here, and we're tearing up the street, before you do the water line, and, you know, to kind of, um, collaborate better on those things, so...
I talked to Dave about that, but, uh, after hearing the full description from Steve, and it's, um, it was that, that change in the left turn lane, actually, I don't really think that the intersection's any better for pedestrians and bicycles, but certainly isn't worse. I mean, I think you can kind of see that when you're in the, either of those left turn lanes, you can kind of see that, um, the bike path a little more, so I... It was all frustrated I was, was actually, you know, after driving through it a couple of times, I thought, it's not the same. Because, I mean, I, that's what I assumed it would be, just a rebuild of what was already there, and I was, I was explained that that's how it was seen, so sometimes even when they change it, because it was the, the water line and all those other things that came up. You know, sometimes you don't see those things, so they try to put back what was there, you know, if there are some minor changes, like them moving of the, the median, which was what I, I mean, no, it wasn't a pedestrian refuge, but it still seems like sometimes those medians do something to prevent some of those... So... Actually, um, uh, Castle Drive, I think I asked you about several years ago whether that was gonna be redone, and I thought it was like no time in the near future, but, you know, since I actually call these things very well, like, it might have been, uh, south of there.
So, um, but I'd ask you about that, that area specifically, like, whether it's, I always thought it was overbuilt, and we talked about things being overbuilt, is that not one of the things that, or one of the areas it seems overbuilt?
Overbuilt?
Uh, too wide for even what it carries, yeah. I mean, maybe even more on the south, uh, but, yeah.
Well, um, yeah, it's, it's really wide where you're kind of turning to high V, because it's just because the alignment shifts a little. And so, based off the design speed when they designed that, that's why, so why, and you have the turn lane for the side streets. And I think when you get, you know, when you're close, when you get to the signalized intersection, we need to have the width and the lanes to be able to, where, where you have traffic queuing or stacking up. Um, and right now, we have a lot of time of the southbound left turn lane backs up into the through lane, and then it gets close to the high V signal, so I think, um, we need, obviously, we need to look at the numbers further, but we would, um, probably plan on removing the median and either doing a dual left turn lane or, or at least lengthening the existing single left turn lane. Uh, we don't have any plans to add any through lanes, it would still be two through lanes, north and south.
Wasn't there a right turn, southbound?
A southbound right, yeah, so, but...
So the other question I would have is that intersection is one, I mean, that's my neighborhood to the, uh, east of there. So, I mean, I think what you hear a lot from people we know that bike, um, terrain tree, and from people in the neighborhood walking to high V, is that there's a real difficulty with the yielding. At that intersection, people turning right and yielding, um, so people turning right onto Castle, um, and pedestrians and cyclists crossing that street. And I think I, I brought this up before, I used to bike that way every day, but there's a visibility issue. I mean, some people are just not yielding, but there's also the, to see a cyclist or a pedestrian on that path, you actually have to go like this and turn around, so I didn't know if they're, they're... Just to bring it up, like, what was done at Twenty-third Street where you kind of pushed pedestrians and bicyclists forward some, so you can have better visibility of anybody on that path, I don't know if that's something that can be considered, or if that... Actually, it's, it's only going to Twenty-second, did you say, to Twenty-second? Oh, well, that would not work, then.
What were you, what were you thinking, not on Clinton Parkway, or...
No, on Clinton Parkway, that's where it is, it's at Castle and Clinton Parkway, but if it's only going to Twenty-second, that...
You're talking the south, the south side where the shared use path crosses?
I'm talking about the...
There's a shared use path on the south.
Yeah, the north side.
Oh, it's on both?
Yeah, on both.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be from Clinton Parkway to Twenty-second.
Oh, right, right, yeah, sorry. Yeah, so that, I don't know if that, just, just to bring it up now, making something considered and designed to...
If you're gonna put a sidewalk on the south side of, I mean, on the east side...
So we're talking about the northeast side.
Right, but if you add a sidewalk on the east side of Castle, right there.
But your concern's the crossing Castle, with all the right turns.
Crossing Castle is what people have said, the right turns, and I mean, I can vouch for that, the right turns, actually, there was a guy hit, hit there not long after right. It was like, you can't see people, um...
People are just not looking, or they can't see.
It's, it's kind of the people are not looking, or that's what I assumed when I biked, I was like, people were just jerks. But then, when I moved there, what, what I would realize is that I would pull up to that stoplight, and you'd look next to you, and it's far enough back that you actually have to turn around to see if anybody's on the path before you turn right.
Well, that, that ramp on that corner should be redone as part of this project.
Yeah, so I think that's just something that should be considered.
It's always behind the crosswalk, so people are stopping where they should, behind the crosswalk.
From the, from the line there now, I don't know.
It should be, because there should, your stop, your stopbar is behind the crosswalk, which is behind the ramp.
Yeah.
It may be worn, um, but I would assume, too, that corner will be relooked at with the design.
It just, yeah.
It's gotta be reconfigured anyway to...
To mention this now, just so that...
The crossing will still be, the crossing of Castle will still kind of be where it's at for the shared use path, and we're not making any changes to Clinton Parkway. But, I know, I mean, I know what you, I live right there, too, and I cross there all the time, and it's, you really gotta look twice.
To make sure, I mean, I do it, but I do it, because...
And we, I think even went up back and put out signs on the signal mast, or to say, yield to pedestrians and the crosswalk, and...
Right, after that got hit, actually.
It's a compliance challenge, but...
Yeah, I think it's just kind of a situation.
Yeah, well, as we talk about traffic safety more and calming, and some of the enforcement needs to be, fun in the discussion.
Yeah, we're...
Especially an intersection like that.
We're working on a traffic safety plan program, whatever we want to call it, um, right now, and PD's heavily involved, and... Kind of got a draft framework of what we think the new program should be. It's not gonna solve all the issues, the resources aren't there to solve all the issues, but we want to make it a little better. So that is right now, kind of at City Manager's Office to look at and get some initial feedback, and then I'd like to, if we can, in November, have that discussion about where we think we want to go with it, um, if I can get all the buy-in. By then, the November study session is when I'd like to have that, that discussion, so... And that will hopefully help some of the enforcement concerns.
Do you guys have a method for measuring yield rates?
Counts, so there, there was some done with you guys, um, and I think the people counting pedestrian counts, like, just visual, down at, um, Iowa, and where the, yeah, the SLT, they were gonna, while they were counting pedestrians, try to record yield rates. That just happened last weekend, the counts?
Yeah, a week ago, yeah.
I think, so I haven't seen that yet, but I know at, at that location... They, uh, they were gonna, I mean, it's just visual, how many people, you know, did not yield when there was a green versus... And they're also looking at how many people are going when they don't have the crossing, you know, so that it's not, it's not always the driver of the car. Um, so they were gonna look at all that.
Yeah, I think we could get more data on these significant intersections, it could be really informative, you know, what needs to be done differently.
I think the sign that, that you all had, I think you had K dot put that up, like, there, K ten.
Yeah, I think we did it, but with their permission, because it's their...
I think that made a difference, but, um, we about got hit there again on Saturday morning at seven thirty.
We, I've still had a few complaints about it.
And that's just, you know, people were coming off K ten going eighty miles an hour, yeah, so they come down, and they're still thinking, I'm on a freeway, and they're still...
What intersection is that?
It's the, it's the, um, westbound ramp, it's the ramp that comes off westbound K ten down to Iowa Street, the fifty yard.
Where the Lawrence Loop crosses.
And the Lawrence Loop, it's right there, goes over to the theaters and the Holiday Inn Express.
Yeah.
That's a tough one, even with the signage, so, it's a tough one. And it was a blue bus. But it wa, it, it was not a city bus or a K U bus.
We need another tone.
Well, that's good, it wasn't a K U bus.
Yeah, wasn't it?
All right.
It wasn't, but I am looking into it.
I'll tell them.
Well?
Need to tell them that.
That's a pretty good place for that.
Or some verities that pop up when, uh, when you push the tra, the crosswalk, so...
Close the ramp.
All right.
That's all we had.
Good job.
Go ahead and adjourn, you're ready.
Wish we had more money, you know?
Well, I know, it's maybe, it's a lighter year next year than...